Depends on how big it is.
Okay, we'll call the meeting in the morning. It's February 9th, six o'clock, and a work session in Oak Ridge, Oregon. And we are here to interview council candidates. But first, the business area is budgeting reasons. Budget reasons to be the president.
In the fact that the United States of America and the public for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
James, are you doing the roll, or is she?
Yeah, yes, I am.
Okay.
Mayor Ketchum?
Here.
Councilor Kenyon?
Here.
Councilor Coker?
Here.
Councilor Hooker?
Here.
Councilor Bjornson?
Here.
Councilor Tarman?
Here.
Next to decisions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda in what my council will have any things. That's four. Okay. Up here. Public comments. So we're going to take a public comment. Just stand up, be recognized, provide your name and address, and you're allowed three minutes to speak. The council will not engage in discussion or make any decisions based on public comment. Council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action to see the council. You're going to be in the room that would like to speak. Anyone on the Zoom platform would like to make a public comment?
Somebody.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to, uh, speak to the last election that we had. And I would just like to point out that Mr. Grant, 544 votes for city council. And that being said, that I've heard all of you up here, all of council, everybody saying they were representing well the people when they got fixed through that tonight. And those who would believe it would like to see Mr. Grant appointed to city council.
Instead of a record, you can state the name.
They're in third part. I've got a 47617, that outline.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Thompson. I know two of the people that have applied for city council. I feel good about those people, but I have very positive thoughts about Chrissy as someone I enjoyed watching her as mayor and how she interacted with the council members. And that's the kind of interaction that I want to see in our counselors, how they interact together and so on and so on. I feel really good about Chrissy as my candidate.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? And we have one on the Zoom, Ms. Hammond.
Good evening. Trudy Hammond, 76349 Willamette Way, Oak Ridge, Oregon. And I would just like to say that Mrs. Hollitt's reputation has literally spoken for itself with her dedication and loyalty to this community. So I'm hoping that the council would consider her for the seat. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Last chance for on the Zoom of any comments. Nothing heard, let's move on. Next is mayor comments, announcements, and proclamations given in a work session. I have nothing to add. And then we'll go to new council comments, announcements. Anyone?
The only thing I want to say is, I haven't met Melissa yet. Then I was wondering, you know, the candidates are here, the rest of us are here. Was she planning to attend or in person?
In person. Okay. Thank you.
I don't really think this is the appropriate time to address that, but thank you.
Okay. We're on to business from the city council. So James, do you have any introductions for this, or you want to just kind of roll into the procedure?
No particular introduction. I just, I think, I don't know if we discussed during the meeting, but my idea was to interview folks alphabetically by last name. So there's no preference shown in any way.
Okay, yeah. And I'll just add, obviously, with people online and in the room we're interviewing, because there was a vacancy created by the resignation of Captain Stevens for personal reasons, we've got three candidates. And I think they've all submitted the proper paperwork and required paperwork. John Corin, Don Grant, and Christina Hollitt. And so we're quite pleased to be able to bring them in and ask questions of them. And so what we'll do is alphabetically by last name. And we'll have you come up and sit at the table. And then we will go around the council and you can ask questions. And then once everyone's asked the first question, we'll come back for seconds if there are any. That sounds good. That's good.
So each candidate will go through, they'll stay there until all of our questions are asked. And then the next one.
The next candidate.
Next candidate. So then, just to clarify, will we be making sure that we ask the same questions?
Not mandatory to do that.
Oh, okay.
So whatever you want to ask of each candidate.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the procedure that we're going to do here? All right, then, is John in the room? Is he online?
I'll look outside.
He is fine.
He did not, you know.
All right, we'll move on to, on Grant. So before the questions start, I want to give the member candidate a chance to say something. Don?
Thank you. My name's Grant. I live at 47725 West First Street. I've been around Oak Ridge for over 10 years. And I've actually, I've lived here for about six years. And that's, it is my home. It's the place that I'm going to stay.
Thank you. All right, we'll start questions. Counselor Bjornson, do you want to start, please?
Yeah, I will. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Grant, have you attended council meetings before in the past? Have you been attending recently?
I have attended a few council meetings. I've actually, I, I started attending online during the COVID. Actually, so not religiously, but sporadically, yes, I have.
Okay, and I just had another question real quick. Do you have any budgeting experience for municipal budgets or anything?
Not from municipal budget budgets, but I did go to school. I was the accounting major and a, and a, gosh, my brain just went blank. Management and accounting major, and I run a business in which I do have to run a budget. I have payroll, I have accounts receivable, accounts payable, supplies, a plethora of, they're basic accounts. They're not as involved as a municipality.
Thank you.
Let's, Captain, go ahead.
Hi.
So what we've been making also to give a bridge of ideas.
Well, you know, like I say, it is my home. And I have a, I have a vision of Oak Ridge. I mean, this process has been started, turning the corner and becoming a vibrant, thriving community, both economically and socially. We've seen, you know, like the WAC, it's getting resurrected. And there are other programs of the park up here in uptown. You know, things like that. I just want to continue that. I want to see, I want to see the city grow and thrive.
Or you feel more about like industrial business coming into the industrial park or something of that sort?
I believe that. That's a great thing. I'm all in support of that. Yes.
So the question about accounting already came up, so I'll skip that. But as a, as a counselor, how do you feel like you're best served to me? Like, for example, you know, I'm related to engineering, so infrastructure is very important to me. I understand well, but you have any specific goals you see as a strong point?
I would say, well, I've, I've run my own business for a long time, 40 years at least. But and one of my, one of my strong points is my ability to communicate and listen to people and to really kind of zoom in on what's important to them. I meet with probably no fewer than five individuals on a weekly basis to talk about their projects. A lot of the projects that I do now are a little bit smaller. You know, we do have some large projects. And so my strong suit, I really feel, is being able to zone in on what's important to them and to cut to the chase to, to really, you know, get the project underway and get it done.
Since I was asked this question so much whenever I was running, what's your standpoint on the highway ambulance fire department? I'm sure you're familiar with the Bay.
As far as the highway goes, we're, we're kind of in a situation. The state of Oregon, we're not in compliance, according to the state of Oregon. The side, to be in compliance, we, to start with, for the ADA section, we have to have a sidewalk on both sides of Highway 58 with wheelchair ramps all the way through. We're not in compliance, the state at this point. And until we come up with some total complete plan, will, they are reluctant to put anything out there. Because if they, let's say that they were to give us sidewalks, and then we come up with a plan that everybody agrees on, and the footprint of the highway turns out to be a little bit wider. They have to rip up the sidewalks. And it's my understanding at this point that the only thing that they're really willing to do is to do patch repairs on the pavement here and there. They're not willing to even go through and repave the entire stretch through Oak Ridge. So that's, the highway situation is something that I think as a community, we all really have to be well informed and come together as a community and decide what it is we want. Whether it's, you know, I sat back and saw the four lane, two lane argument, and we really need to come to some sort of a conclusion. And it's not, neither side, I don't think, is wrong. I think both sides had a point. But, you know, anyway, that's the highway issue at this point. Fire and EMS, there's a serious, there's a serious shortage of funds for that. I think, I think there's, we have to find ways. Scott actually was, founded a grant that we could apply for. And I'm pretty sure that he actually took the initiative to apply for that. And, you know, that'll go a long way. But other than that, we need to, we need to continue looking for grants. And it's understaffed. I do know that.
Start with, you got two each down, but all right.
Okay, good evening, by the way. I guess my first question would be, I guess I'll start with this one. What do you think qualifies you over anybody else? Not just the ones that are applying, if there are anybody else that, you know, may see the council seat?
Well, that's a good question.
Typical one.
Well, it is, because I'm normally pretty humble. And for me to come across as, well, I'm, I'm the guy. That's not really my personality. I, like I say, I have the ability to listen. I have, I have a lot of, I have the ability to cut to the chase in a matter and not necessarily, I'm not going to confront anybody about anything, but to say, hey, it sounds to me like this is what we really need to get done. So I'm, I'm more of a guy that gets things done. That's, that's really the thing that qualifies for me. I have a pretty rounded experience in bookkeeping, running a business, dealing with people. And that's, that's probably what would qualify me. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. Yes, thank you. I think the other question would be, you know that our city has been divided way past beyond and still is to a certain extent. We all have different ideas of what we think needs to be happening, what needs to happen. How would you handle somebody coming up in the grocery store to you and saying, you're an idiot if you think this?
Well.
How do you handle conflict?
I, okay, I would, I would take my blood pressure medication. I would, yes. And I thoroughly expect that something like that is going to happen. And it has happened. And I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not the guy that's going to get all puffy and get in your face. I am not, no. Probably say, why do you say that? What makes you feel that way? What is it that I did? Can we talk about it?
Oh, thank you. So just to, okay, so. Okay, here's one. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town if you were a counselor?
Well, it's really important that they're informed. And there have been several suggestions that I thought were really great, great suggestions, and I'm on board with. One would be some sort of a newsletter that went out that, that allowed everybody enough information so that they could actually feel like they were involved. The second would be, you know, town hall meetings. Everybody, you know, everybody would have a chance to come in and say something. And based on the division that has been in this town, I actually think that a town hall meeting would help settle some of that division. People would get a chance to get stuff off their chest. And, you know, to start with, I wouldn't expect it to be a very productive meeting. But in the end, I think it could lead to a very, a very informed, very informed public. And everybody, everybody should feel like they have a little bit of a voice.
If you received a $1 million grant to use for the city in any way that you want, what would you do with it and why?
Boy, okay, and why? I think this one goes without stating. A portion of it would go to fire and EMS. A portion of it would go to help stabilize and improve the infrastructure with the aging wastewater system and sewer systems. There's any number of things that, roads, there are roads here that are in bad need of repair. There are, there's, there's got to be a certain amount that would, would go to some sort of a public service, too. So on public service, I'm not sure which one, but I would certainly, I would certainly look into some of that because I, the community isn't just physical. It's not just buildings and roads. It's made up of people. And, and so the public services would be a portion of that, I'm sure.
Thank you.
John, my question is, and I already have one, is, you know, we've already spoken of a bunch of issues the city is handling with. Out of all those issues we've spoken of, from your perspective, as a resident, what is the most significant challenge the city's facing? And what are some of your ideas, especially the one solving this?
In my opinion, the most significant and the most in-your-face element is the lack of funds. And very simply, I think we should, we should make, we have in the past, and we should continue to make a concerted effort to apply for grants. We could and should look for ways to bring realtors, or not realtors, or real estate developers into the community. We need to change the zoning and the ordinances to make it more builder-friendly. It would help if, if the front step of Oak Ridge, the Highway 58, if we could do something there. A little bit of paint goes a long way. It really does. And I don't, you know, pulling the weeds and sidewalks and stuff like that, just to tidy it up, to make it more appealing for people to invest money here. So, there's, and the other is, is just to continue to watch our pennies and use it as wisely as we can. And I think that's, those are the only things that we can really do for the finances at this point.
I guess we'll start with a second round now. Second question, your follow-up question.
I just wanted to follow, because I didn't quite hear what you said on that last one. We need to watch our.
We need to continue to watch our pennies.
Pennies?
Yes, sorry.
I just didn't hear that word, excited.
Yeah. No, I do kind of dwindle off, sorry.
No, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
All right, city council, have a second round of questions. Karen, do you have anything more?
No.
Where are your favorite places to spend time in this town?
In this town? All over.
All state area.
Our area. Well, during COVID, I worked on my house a whole bunch. That's one of the favorite places. But no, there, there are several places in Uptown that we'll go for dinner. There's, you know, if there's music, my wife and I both really enjoy music. So, if it's, if it's at the pub, we go to the pub. If it's at the Moose, we'll go to the Moose. If it's at the corner, we'll go to the corner. And, you know, we'll go, we'll go to the pizza place for pizza and watch a game sometimes. We go to the Mexican restaurant for, you know, on occasion. And, you know, as far as establishments go, that's, there are, I mean, we love, we like to hike. There's, there are a lot of trails around here. It's just a beautiful, beautiful area. We just, yeah.
All right, there's no more, Dawn. Thank you very much, and thank you for putting in your application.
Thanks, thank you.
See you all, are you ready? Do you want to introduce yourself, and then we'll, before we start asking questions?
Yeah, my name's Kristen Hollitt. I think you all know me. Is it, would it be appropriate for me to read my cover letter? You guys have all had a chance to read over that, it wouldn't be necessary. Well, I'm a mom of three. I'm really active in the community in multiple areas, as you guys know. I've lived here since 2007. I plan to stay here for quite a while. Dedicated to this, improving this community and being a part of it even more. So, I'm a counselor for three years and a mayor for one, so I've learned a lot over the time. Yeah.
Great. We'll start on the other end. Tamel put two questions, just like you had last time.
Okay. Okay, so. What's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial space or rehabbing existing homes and apartments?
Gosh, I can't really say that one is more important than the other because I do, I feel really passionately about the dilapidated buildings on the highway need to be improved. I think that's the first thing that people come in and see when they see our town. And unfortunately, you know, it doesn't leave a lot for people to travel uptown when they see dilapidated buildings. And I would love to see the highway better so that people are encouraged to do more here. However, I learned a lot about our zones through, that are not where they should be and how much we need those to change. And the housing problem, you know, that is also something that prohibits people from moving here for the Forest Service, for the school district. Some of our largest employers here don't live in Oak Ridge because we have such a housing shortage. And the rentals that we do have are $1,200, $1,300, $1,400, $1,500 a month. So, they're, to be honest, they're very, both equally important.
Okay. If you received a $1 million grant to use for the city in any way that you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
I'm glad I got this question. When I ran for council the first time in 2019, I think I was asked a similar question. And it goes back to the highway. And for me, this answer doesn't have to do with two lanes versus four lanes. I genuinely believe that our Highway 58 corridor needs to look more enticing for travelers and also for people to take pride in their community. I know I've spoke with a lot of uptown businesses, and it is just when the highway, when there's so many dilapidated buildings, it leaves people not wanting to see what else Oak Ridge has to offer. The uptown area has so much, just the whole area. So, I think I would want to spend some money there. Our town is named Oak Ridge, and there really aren't any trees planted on the highway. I find that really sad. Our trees, all, excuse me, our city streets in the uptown area are named after trees. Again, our highway is really lacking trees when people come through. Usually, that's something you see on a main area, it's not there. I think people would have expected, I would say, dump that money into public safety, but I would not say dump it all into public safety. Maybe there could be an area to be helped in public safety. But there really are so many areas in Oak Ridge that really need the funding. So, I think really overall economics is where I would, economic development. Thank you.
I'm going to just like push my way out. What would you like to see for Oak Ridge to bring in business-wise?
I would love to see, I really, I would love to see a business that kind of took over the Oak Ridge Industrial Park. I don't know if anybody has ever been to Great Wolf Lodge, but I think Great Wolf Lodge would be a great tourist attraction for Oak Ridge. It really pulls in the outdoors. It would hire a tremendous amount of people here, provide a lot of jobs, and it brings a lot of people into Oak Ridge to help support our businesses. So, that's one I've always thought was great. I know a lot of people have talked about a trucking, truck stop and things like that. And although I think that would be a nice thing, I just don't think it would bring as much overall economy-moving stuff for citizens here as much as something really big in the OIP.
Okay. And what do you see as your highest priority for you personally as you become a councilor?
Public safety is definitely a big one. I really think that, and you guys are well aware of this, I would love to see some type of unified partnership happen with all three jurisdictions, Hazeldale, Westford, and the city of Oak Ridge. I think the city of Oak Ridge has bared the burden of providing public safety forever. And I think it needs to be spread more evenly. Unfortunately, there's not as much funding in the other areas, but I think that needs to be explored more. So, that would be a high priority. Also, the obvious one is city budgeting. That's always needs a really close eye on. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of other areas to keep adding in our city budget.
All right, I'll start off with similar questions. So, what is your standpoint on the highway ambulance and fire department? I'm sure you're familiar with the Bay.
Well, ambulance and fire department, I did go over this a lot. My background, I've been in the fire service since I was 17, and I worked in an ambulance service since I was in my early twenties. So, I've worked in very, very, even more rural areas than Oak Ridge and also more metro areas. So, for me, the importance of public safety overall, and that includes public works and police, not just the fire and ambulance, is of the utmost importance. I truly believe it is a core service that cities need to make sure that it's stable and that they provide. So, I think that answers that pretty well. As far as the lane reduction thing, that's what you're getting at?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I know, I saw. So, I've been through years of this. This has been going on, honestly, I've seen chatter about it since I moved here in 2007. I think it's been going on for more than 20 years. I'm really not, I see both sides. Yes, I believe there needs to be a lot of changes made to Highway 58. However, I don't believe the only option is two lanes. And I say that because I went through a lot of ultimatums being given to the city. And I just, I honestly don't think that's fair. Sitting through the lane reduction hearing that we held, we had almost 70, 60 some odd people opposed to a lane reduction and six people in favor. So, I think that really always speaks highly when you have that many citizens turning out till 11:00 PM at night, that it makes it, you really need to make sure you're listening to your citizens.
As a counselor, what do you feel is your strongest, your strong point as far as what you could focus most on?
Public safety is a big one, but really communicating with the public. I am a huge advocate of making sure that you're out actually listening to your citizens. That can be in a coffee shop, that could be on an emergency call, that could be at the grocery store, that could be on social media. I mean, there's so many avenues, I think, communicating and being a listener and communicating that information back to council meetings when you're making decisions is huge.
In what area do you think it's the most work and then to be a leverage?
What is the most work? I think infrastructure sadly is probably, you know, I don't know all the ins and outs of public works, but this year I learned a lot about the equipment that public works has and how extremely dated it is and some of the status of our water systems and the INI. Sadly, I think that's probably the area that needs the most work.
Where do you see Oak Ridge in two years?
One, two years? I would love to see, I would love to see a different solution other than a public safety fee. I would love to see the council moving forward for a different model for fire and ambulances, ambulance service. I would love to see maybe a more stable budget, obviously more grants. That's, you know, that's a lot of work right there, but those are things I would love to see more. The housing studies to be completed so that we can hopefully start moving on taking some action after that information comes out and then possibly doing a little bit of work in the OIP.
Councilor Jarson, are you ready? Some questions?
Yeah. Can you tell us why you think you would be the best candidate for this open seat?
I hate being pinned, pinned, you know, up against somebody because I do think Dawn offers some great qualities. But I do feel like I am the best candidate because I have been so vested in the community for such a long time, and I have three years of council experience and also one year of mayor experience. In that time, I have learned the ins and outs of the city budget and, you know, how things work in City Hall, how things work in public works. And I feel like I have a really good overall picture of what makes things tick in Oak Ridge and where some of the areas are that don't tick.
Thank you.
All right. Hi, Chrissy. You bring a wealth of experience with you, having served as a council and as mayor. Grants are great, but it's not one you also have to look at where you take reductions in the city budget. Experience you have, where would you focus those efforts that you were involved in budget process? Where would you look for efficiencies?
Deficiencies and cuts? So, where would I make cuts, more cuts in the budget? You know, I've been through the budget process now four times. I cannot honestly say that there's glaring areas in the budget that are glowing or flashing red lights to me that you need to cut here. So, unfortunately, I don't have a good answer for you. I think we all know that our budget is pretty thin.
This next question is difficult, but I've been asked by several constituents. Try to paraphrase it if it's in their concern. So, in light of the November 20th election, we're here seeking to regain a seat rather than being, what do you tend to do differently, if anything, to gain the support of the majority of your constituents? Or is there a need to change?
What do I need to do differently? Well, I didn't run for councillor, I ran as mayor. So, are you asking why I didn't run for councillor?
No, I'm asking you that. In that question, you didn't have the majority of the vote, obviously. So, as a councillor, how would you gain that majority support from your constituents?
I believe I do have a good support from constituents here in Oak Ridge. What would I do differently? I think maybe there might be a couple different areas I might reach out to to try to help those areas, those maybe organizations a little bit more. But I do feel like I work really closely with a lot of the community and try to help anywhere I can, honestly. So, I don't know.
Thank you. Are there second rounds of questions by a councillor?
Where are your favorite places this whole time in our town?
I love frequenting all the restaurants, so I'm just going to use all the restaurants as one. I also like giving all the restaurants lots of kudos on social media because we have a lot of restaurants, there's a lot of great food to offer. Second, I really enjoy spending a lot of time through the fire department because I'm able to meet people one-on-one and help them. It goes back to helping people. So, that is one of my favorite places, that would be in the homes of citizens, helping them on their worst day. A third place that myself and my family like to frequent is Seaman Falls.
Seaman Falls? Thank you.
The others? So, when I do the background, I didn't know what it was for, it's not what it looks like. Personally, but so it continues to be here a lot of time. And so, one of the things I heard a lot of that was the major concern for people was having so many councilmen have such a major conflict interest over their husband being on the fire department. I mean, besides just declaring, you know, making the declaration of, you know, no, no conflict, sometimes, you know, perception becomes reality in people's heads. Do you have anything that you could do to help people with that concern?
I think it goes back to people having ethics training. Have you taken the councillor ethics trainings?
No, I didn't.
So, when you go through those, they talk about what the ethic violate, what ethics violations are, and it all really comes back down to the dollar. So, when it comes to the city So when it comes to the city budget, I don't vote on the budget. When it comes to anything that could have to do with a salary increase or decrease with my spouse, I'm not involved in those topics. And one misconception from, I haven't heard from many, but I have heard in the past, was that city council decides the salaries, you know, and employee parameters for employees, and that's just not the case. The city administrator takes care of 100% of the salaries and that is a pay scale that's negotiated, it doesn't even come to council. So when it comes to the budget, it's really the only time that council sees it. In a budget committee session is when I declare a potential. And when it comes to an actual budget committee meeting of the council, I declare a conflict. So, you know, I have put that out there before. Anytime anybody's asked me, I've explained that. I've even got a written documentation from the ethic, the Oregon Ethics Commission, and I've presented it at the very first budget meeting I ever attended. And Bobby Whitney has done the same thing, and I know there's been many more.
Anything else? Chrissy, thanks so much for putting in that application.
Thank you.
Just to, for the candidates, just to remind, the ballot will occur next week, their regular session. I believe there's a need for them to be here, is there a drink? There's, there's no requirement, okay?
Well, I accept the
A, then basically.
Oh, yes, so there is a requirement. If, if you wanna, if you wanna attend the council that day.
Well, if I'm, I excuse that, that's right.
So yes, please plan to be here next Thursday, since. We're gonna put it at, at, at close to the front of the agenda, so we'll, very quickly. Any questions from the, from the candidates before we close out here?
I just wanted to note that I will send the council back to both of you so you both be prepared for me.
All right. That's it up. Do you have your emotions to share?
I'm so ready. I'm gonna check.
On favor? All right, bye.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody. So.